Anybody else know? Five back passes.
Our dog days?
Yes.
Dog days?
Dog days. Any half?
The D's. Dog, the D's. No space.
If you go back and forth.
The dog days of summer.
All right, just before we call it to order, if people want to come and move their chairs up, they put their backs to the sun up here. So if you want to move your chair to a place where it'll join you a little better.
You're gonna all.
Up to you.
If you put your back.
I'll find, hide behind the fridge.
There we go.
You could hover behind them.
You don't have to wear it, my camera's up high enough even if you're sat.
All right, we're gonna, well, we'll call the meeting to order and if you want to switch around over into that corner there where the sun is not shining. Put a two oh three.
I'm done. This is good.
Apparently you're the one moving.
I'm right at the.
All right, all right, calling the meeting to order, roll call please. Judy Nelson, Tom Coons, Emily Lee, Andrea Anderson, Erin Houdinoff. Stand for the close, the closing. Ah, comments by visitors. We've already hit start on the business portion, but comments by visitors? I see no comments by visitors at this point, so we will move on. The consent calendar is, um, right now has on it, um, our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school board goals. They're in the packet to review, so, um, you can either remove them in that discussion button or just leave them in and then go forward with it. Then the withdrawal committee minutes, which, they're here, um, this was the joint meeting, this was the joint meeting.
Is the joint meeting in San Jose?
No, no, it was the last one. They have been approved by the withdrawal committee and then our last school board meeting on June thirteenth. So what's the pleasure to just, uh, to accept the whole, uh, second? All right, motion and second to accept the consent calendar and further discussions. All in favor, she can probably say an eye.
Eye.
All right. All right, announcements and communication. We'll start with the superintendent updates.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start just by mentioning briefly the summer projects. I know it's under the principal's report for an update. A lot of wonderful projects this year. If you haven't had an opportunity to see all of them, certainly make an appointment with Rich just to make sure that you can get around all areas of the building on the inside. But the tile and the hoopla, the front steps, the gym, just awesome. Really, uh, jobs that needed to be done for quite a while and Rich is gonna talk to them a little bit more about them, but they're looking good. An update on the withdrawal committee. We met earlier this week. I have sent out an RFI request for information for, to about ten to twelve school districts for other SAUs to provide feedback to see if there's any interest in, if, in, uh, having them contract services for the SAU, if that's the way the withdrawal committee decides to go. So that's in process. It was also posted by the Hampshire School Board Association, so we're reaching out to gather that information and the withdrawal committee's gonna be taking that into consideration in future meetings. The next meeting for the withdrawal committee is August twenty eighth. That's gonna be in the town library at six P M. And then there's an informational forum set for September eighteenth at six thirty P M and that's here at Rollinsford Grade School and the gym. And at the informational forum, it will be an update as to what the withdrawal committee has talked about so far, some of the data that has, has been received and some of the possibilities of, uh, outcomes, whether it's to create your own SAU, contract a service with another SAU, along with tentative figures for, for what that might cost. So that's all for informational forum on September eighteenth. All are welcome. And that is for question and answer, that's for receiving feedback back from the public to help the withdrawal committee make an informed decision.
Can you say the next meeting, August twenty eighth, the library?
Yeah.
Library is planned to be closed for meeting and partying.
But maybe elsewhere, um, Jen went, is contacting the library and checking that out. She was gonna contact the library, thank you. I, I, I didn't hear anyone, I saw that.
Yeah, I was only know because I'm learning.
Hi, we're done.
So won't be at the library in some way.
Um, we had a meeting with Marshwood School Board and talked about many items on the tuition agreement, some language, uh, some things about homeschooling, billing procedures. We talked about career tech education services, late bus services, immunization, all kinds of different things, as well as SAU services to see tentatively if they were interested in, in possibly responding to that RFI as well. At this point, I've got a meeting with Superintendent John Cavali next Tuesday, August thirteenth, and we're gonna be talking about the tuition agreement just to see if we can tidy up some of the language in there and, and some of the things the fiscal board has brought up and their board has brought up as well. So our tentative plan is to meet, uh, try to agree on some language and then we will bring back any suggested changes to do as well as the Marshall Board and then if it's agreeable, let the feedback from the board, we can tidy that up as well. So that, that meeting, my meeting with him is, is next Tuesday.
Can you think about another word?
Sure.
So, uh, the meeting, I think Erin was the only one who couldn't make that meeting and I, I, I know I thought it was one of the best meetings we've had with Marshwood and it was a real discussion, um, board, board members to board members, the two superintendents, Tom and Carol was new, Bob's already been in years, that was the first time we've been together, a joint board meeting and everybody worked really as a team and worked through a lot of things very, very quickly. And, um, and it wasn't really all of us at that meeting, the superintendents can really do a lot, clean up the language, know what we, know what we want to do for, for, for possible extension, they're gonna work on it. So, anyone else who was there, you wanna chime in?
No, my thought was, I didn't hear about it, I think, Bob and this, they called, always.
It's strange, oh my goodness. This is bad.
Tom, you know, very good.
Yeah, they repeatedly expressed their pleasure of Rollinsford too and, and their receptiveness on, on continuing this relationship, so it was very positive.
That's right, you were at another meeting. They told us you were. Well, I was going to ask you one when we get to the meeting, you were acting, what you were doing, but it really was a great meeting. I think you probably didn't interrupt.
No, just one last thing, uh, Marshwood also had some questions. John Cavali had called me and said that they had a number of questions about the possibility of contracting services, the SAU services for Rollinsford, uh, and he's gonna be including all of those in an email to me and I told him that I would get him, uh, any answers to his questions and the data that he needs, any feedback that he needs to, so they can make a, a pretty important decision on their end as well. And that's all I have.
That's good. While, while we're going through, um, sort of announcements and communication, I'd like to give an update. I, I attended the, um, sort of the public forum on water, on the water district stuff, obviously to, um, some other folks, but, um, part of what was, one of the reasons I attended is that when the water district, when the people, when the water district superintendent listed the highest priority things that needed to be done, they talked, they talked about the, the water distribution system around the grade school. It's always that way, so I thought I would go just to get sort of an official, um, it was a great panel of people, it was the, it was the waters, current water superintendent, the past water superintendent, um, two people from Hampshire D E S, Department of Environmental Services and a professor from U N H who is an engineer and, and he specializes in water. And, uh, I, I, I asked a question early on, but I, then I went up to the D E S specialist, both of them, and I said, I just want a very clear answer. I just want to, have you, yes or no, the water is safe to drink? Absolutely, one hundred percent, the water is safe to drink? And they do, they do a full pan of three of testing here to make sure that the water is indeed safe here at the school. Yeah. And, and they, they, they also talked that they work very closely with Dick Fortier. I mean, they knew the names of the school, they know who they're working closely with here and they work closely with them.
I gotta add a little more information as well. Um, Dick Fortier and Rich have been, um, sending water samples out to be tested. One of the, the requirements is to specifically test for lead in any of the water on all of the faucets. There were four, I believe four or five faucets that came back borderline as far as the lead testing goes. None of them were from drinking faucets, they were from hand washing stations and things like that. So there was, there were no drinking faucets at all that were affected by that. Since that happened, there have been faucets that have been changed out, there have been filters that have been put on, uh, and we've gathered some additional, I should say, they have gathered some additional water samples and sent them out and we're awaiting, uh, feedback from them as well on that test. We should receive that back in about a week, is that right, Rich?
Dick is gonna call tomorrow to get an update. It's been out for about a week and a half now, so I, I would anticipate within a week.
So the feedback that they got was that they were hopeful that if, if we made these changes of faucets and filtration, that it wouldn't be borderline anymore, it would be fine. But either way, there are hand washing stations and there are not drinking stations. Uh, and the other requirement is to, uh, post a letter on that information as well as to send it to parents and guardians and as soon as we get the additional testing back and find the final results, then they'll be sending it out, uh, by email as well as posting it on the website, so that information will be out. But to reinforce what Judy said, it, it's safe to drink, uh, and none of the, none of the affected faucets were drinking.
And let me clarify, one of the things I learned, because they said, they wanted to share information whether you had, whether you were in the water district or not, it was, the lead that is found is not in the water, it can be in your fixture, especially if you have, um, some from, uh, from, from China or, or the Far East or other, other places. And they, they urged everyone at that meeting to look and test their water at the source because it could, it could be your fixture that it's coming from, that the lead is legit. So, and that was, it was likely the case here, obviously it wasn't the water, it's not the one in the water, so.
Well, we're mandated to test each faucet anyway.
How do you know it's not?
Well, here they knew the drinking water is not. The drinking water has, does not have lead.
It was just coming from specific faucets.
They, they test, so the water district tests at the source and at, and at the very end of their system, so at the fire station and some other places. They don't test anywhere in between because they just have to make sure that it's safe and living and at the very end. And so I, I did, when I spoke with them alone afterwards, I, I said, you know, why, why isn't everyone testing at this school? And they said, well, we're working closely with people who work there and it does get tested. Um, so I, I felt quite confident after speaking with them. I think I interrupted you.
I'm done.
All right, so the, um, principal, principals update.
Um, so I, I don't have a whole lot more than what's in your packet, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We do have one opening for certain that is, um, out there that I've begun interviewing for, with a possibility of a second one coming. My hope is that we'll be fully staffed by the first day. If not, then we'll do what we did last year, we have some very capable subs to start the year. We had to do that for weeks last year before finding, um, candidates, but I'm hopeful that it won't be like that this year.
And you're talking about, I mean, these two coaches, not, not, um, teachers at this point?
Teaching staff is fully staffed, uh, we've been that way since middle of May when we filled those positions and nobody is left over the summer from the teaching staff. Extended school year ended today, they had been relocated to the library because of the tiling of the main building, um, but, um, T S Y is for students, special education students who need, um, to continue their learning throughout the summer so that they don't, um, make drastic drops in what they learn. So we had a good little group this year working hard and, um, it's not typical paper pencil, sit down and skill and drill, they apply what they learn and, um, do it through speaking and through games. Watched a couple of kids, a fifth grader and a future seventh grader playing a math game yesterday and multiplying numbers from a board with numbers on the dice and getting able to just whip off their answers, so, um, good little group that they had. A little bit off of the transition, I like to throw in our transition with Marshwood once in a while. We talked about having a meeting with, um, the SAU's new special ed director, Marshwood's new special ed director, our new special ed liaison, um, just so that we're all on the same page to start the school year. We didn't have this type of transition last year, I was new, our liaison last year was new, um, and I think we didn't do a good enough job of all meeting together, talking about the procedures and what was expected on their end, what the limitations are on our end because they work here as well. So we do have a meeting on the books for Monday, August nineteenth. All six people involved are gonna meet, we all found the time, um, and should be able to start the year better for our new liaison. And then just to piggyback off of Bob about buildings and grounds, um, a lot of things are being, are close to done. The front steps are installed, there's, um, the railings that need to get put on and a little bit of landscaping on the sides that need to be filled in. The gym is over half done, um, for those of you that get a chance to peek at it before the meeting, um, they need to come back and sand out a couple of places, um, and then finish it, make it shine, but it's looking great. All of the classrooms are clean, uh, people are moving in, teachers are here at all hours every day, there were a couple here as you were walking in. We've replaced all of the internal door locks, we had, um, door locks that began breaking down and keys not being able to work on them, um, and to us that was a safety feature that we asked for your support on last spring, um, in case of a lockdown, we need to make sure that we can, you know, quickly lock them. So all of those are installed. We do have a new intercom system that's been installed. One of the things that I found last year coming in, we had the new phone system, which was great, um, and there was intercom capability, but if there's any noise in a room, you can't even hear, um, the signal that there's gonna be an announcement unless you're very close to it. So we got an intercom system set up, we've got intercoms in our hallways now, so if you're out in the hallway, um, and you hear echoing from a classroom, you don't have to run to a classroom to hear the announcement, you can hear it in the hallway. So we'll get some training on that at the beginning of the year so that, um, another safety feature is in place for our building. Other than that, the tiles in the main hallways are done completely, uh, baseboards are done to make it look really nice, um, and I, I don't know how they've done it in seven and a half weeks. And they still have a couple of weeks to go to finish up some little projects here and there. One of the things I was gonna ask you folks is, um, Bob offered, you know, contact me if you want to come in on your own, um, before school or even right after school starts, feel free to contact me, but if you want as a group to do it, we could do that at the September meeting as well. I know that's leaving the meeting to do a tour, but, um, if you're interested in doing that together, um, that's up to you folks. I would, I love giving tours of buildings and showing it off, so if you'd like to do that, I'm more than willing to do that for you.
If the board would like, we could, we could actually start meeting at six or six fifteen, um, to do a group tour of the front steps.
That's good.
Saves you a trip and I can get you all done at once instead of five times. Not that I wouldn't mind, but. Um, the only other thing is an announcement on a date, our open house is scheduled for September tenth and we'll try again this year for nice weather so that we can do a picnic the first hour outdoors and then the classrooms the second hour. We'll meet in the gym like we did last year, just a quick announcement for me before I send folks off to the gym and whether you have kids here or not, you're more than welcome to attend, that's before our next school board meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any update on the committee number?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, the number in there is still what it is and actually I have an update on total numbers, but it'll change, we've got a couple of weeks left. As of today, taking out the kids that we know that are leaving, um, we're at one forty-eight. If I add in the six that we've been told are coming, we're at one fifty-four, so definitely one forty-eight, but most likely we'll grow back up over one fifty again.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rich? All right, we're right along, um, we're going down to the financial update and our packet, we received the oil bid, which is something we receive every year.
Yeah, the price is consistent with what you've done in the past, it's eighteen cents above whatever that daily, their daily cost is, um, so it's, it's consistent with what you've done in the past.
And it is, it is the same amount, uh, the town, the town receives exactly the same price.
Do you want to vote?
Mm-hmm. And, and it's, it's under action items, so we can either do it now or under action items? Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The oil bid is accepted.
Uh, I think we did.
All right, a budget, a budget update. Also in our packet, there was the, um, the note from Katie that we are not receiving thirty-five thousand dollars that we anticipated receiving, um, from special education aid. And the reason is that we have no students that are three and a half times, we have no students receiving special education that are, are getting three and a half times the state average and that's how we qualify for that aid. So we have zero Rollinsford students who qualify for that data at this point. And as she noted, they're gonna be keeping a close eye on, on the special education council and stuff, but that is indeed thirty-five thousand dollars that we anticipated as revenue and that's how the budget was set up. But we will not receive. Just making a clear update, so.
No, that, that about sums it up. And I can check each child and then came to the conclusion that, that, good news, bad news. The good news is you don't have any students that are, are at that, that level of need. The bad news is if there's thirty-five thousand dollars, you're not gonna realize for this year, so. Well, we'll keep an eye on it.
I appreciate it, thank you. And, and you were at a budget committee meeting, a monthly order at the Marshwood, uh, meeting, anything you'd like to report for now?
Well, pretty much, uh, I think, um, you know, we're not doing a lot to report as not much happening, so I just gave an update, um, you know, all the great work that's been going on around here, um, and it has been noticed by the new board members and they're very excited, so that's nice.
That's very sweet. It does look tricky.
Yeah.
You're keeping a handicap parking spot.
The people are very happy about the people.
Really? You're getting theirs or not?
It's about, um, six, so much better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's good, it's good, it's good, you're sure they're noticing that.
Mm-hmm.
We knew they were, but.
Yes. It's good to have them notice it in the positive way, right?
So can I ask a question about the, um, when, when we, um, the department, special education, primary care is their reports? When is that time for messing the screen? Was that just now? I mean, we're just.
The timing is so off. They do it, we have to do our budget, but they don't tell us until nine months later. Something like nine months later after we prepare our budget, that we're not gonna get that.
So this year, I mean, the revenue will be, this year, we saw.
Yeah, you receive the revenue and follow it. So it's a, it's a best educated guess.
Right, that's all you can do, right? And I guess, cause they're looking more at actuals, right? Cause what they're doing when they're preparing their reports.
Yes.
I guess there's no way around that.
And, and we're trying to anticipate what we're gonna need, that we've already paid for what happened last, you know, we were there basically, we've already paid for that. It gets.
I mean, it's very tricky, yeah.
It does happen, this is, this is often a time when, when the people will see, certainly the bigger Cs with much, much larger budgets than we have, that there are hundreds of thousands of dollars off on the April, July, and that can be, that can really be a real monkey wrench in their, in their life. Any other, but, any other questions?
Yeah, no, I was thinking about how Marshwood talks about their budgeting process and so much more, um, in mind, so I, I, seems like we could do it a better way, but I don't know. I don't know, I mean, it's just a save the answer, right?
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it is just simply dictated by your March meeting and then the backwards from there and you don't get that, so.
Right, see, they, they, they vote in June and they start their budgeting in March, so just as we're finished with our budgeting, so, so they're back close to budgeting, right? And they're, they're much closer than we are.
Right.
Anything else on that though?
No, no, I'm just.
Anything else on the budget that needs to be shared?
No, those were the highlights at this point.
Um, all right, so next, so new business, we had the first reading of two policies, um, administration of federal grant funds. Ribbit on the wheel. And, and the food service, the other name, the food service payment charging policy and procedure. It's been very long. So, um, discussion on, on the food reading? Both are required, I believe, right? And because they're required, is it true, I mean, it's not as if we can change language, correct? I mean, not, not that I don't know what the term.
Yeah, you look, administration of federal grant funds and, and the, the difficult part of that is that it's very inclusive, it's very necessary and it's very structured in what it needs to say, so, no, there's not a lot of flexibility.
I mean, and, and, and I noticed that it really all falls to the superintendent to make sure that all of this is being followed, so.
Yeah, can we, I know, I don't think these are actually on tonight, I'm sure they're just putting forward tonight since they're required and they're not particularly needed on yet.
I think I, I think I, I would recommend you skip, continue with the processes, whatever you want to do, just go through these, and that way, then it doesn't need to be like that.
And the food service one, it was, it was that last, or is the, uh, just a little bit of language change in for, I believe. Is that, is that new or has everyone said that food service policy?
I think we have, um, no, we have.
We have that, right?
Yeah, I've looked at that.
Yep, that's correct, yep. Yes, yep, that's correct, yep. We have.
Left side.
Yeah. That one has changed, the federal grant one is new, the National School Board Association just put that one in, so, that's why it's all yellow. So any other discussion? And I did have a question on the food policy, though. Is it, is it, whose, whose policy is, is the federal government's policy because we get federal funds for, for, for food and reduced meals, or is it the state policy?
Actually, it's your policy.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. Based on the, based on the.
But there's, I would say that there are federal guidelines, because the federal government is still on the federal.
Thank you. No, this is just the first reading.
We'll move it for second meetings. We'll move it forward to second meeting.
All right, so that's, those two are moved forward, they will be, um, the second reading and action will be taken at the September meeting for that. Um, and then we have the second reading of policies, there were quite a number of them. School district credit cards, audits and financial monitoring, fraud prevention and fiscal management, purchasing, petty cash accounts, bidding requirements, payment procedures, payroll procedures, pension schools, school properties disposition and data governance and security. I believe all except the last one, it was recommended by auditors, are we, we need to have these policies in place? And, and we did look at them once, are there any further questions, comments, discussion to have on the ones moving forward?
Motion to accept all of the policies, all of the second reading, second.
All right, we have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote for parents. Um, old businesses, we don't really have old businesses, except you have the notes, I noted that we said we wanted to review the cell phone policy. And so I was going to ask for volunteers and suggest, um, Emily and Aaron, to review the policy during, um, I think it had to do with making it more, um, in our, in our minutes from last time, it's more like making sure that it is age appropriate here.
Oh, right, yeah.
If that, does that, for any, any adult?
Yes.
Or is it, you can talk about ages.
Ages, that's right.
The tin can hanging from the tree on the router.
Right.
So if you two, if you, if you can.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. So we, we, we try to remember to get them on the agenda, please. All right. Uh, we've already taken care of the, the one action item that we had. Um, so the future, the future dates, we know we have, uh, the, uh, we do have, we don't have a date for the sixth grade form, and also, that was part of the thing that we did discuss with the Marshwood folks, and they would like to be there, the superintendent, the, um, the, I think, the middle school, uh, principal, they definitely, they absolutely said they wanna be there and be part of, be part of that discussion, so. So that's really, be part of the panel. So that's really good. Um, August 28th, we have another fall meeting, we don't know where we are, not to be determined where we'll meet, um, that is a, a Wednesday, I believe, and so, first, and the first day of school. Actually, we can find, I'm surprised to be sure.
And with the country's fire.
It's, yes.
We do.
Oh, it's hot. Nice weather, right? Anyway, so that's, that one, our next, our next meeting. Our next meeting is the 12th, we have our, um, we have an, uh, we have an SAU board meeting on the 16th of September, on September 18th is when we're doing the public, the withdrawal of public form, and that will be held here at RGS as Bob mentioned earlier, and the rest of school board meetings there.
The 16th is our public meeting?
Yes. It's, it's at the bottom of the agenda, in case you're not seeing it. September 16th.
Oh, there you go, okay, future meetings, and then school, that's, I was.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh. Is there anything else that we've, anything that we've missed on meetings or anything? All right. And then we are up to closing comments by visitors. We've scheduled a fluke late already, the first, first Friday in October. I'm sorry, could you, we've scheduled fluke late. Influenza, shock. Excellent, excellent. This is now the nurse speaking for you.
Sorry, Gail.
Guess you had a good turnout last year with all, right?
I think you had a first, yeah, absolutely.
First Friday in what?
October 4th. Thank you for doing that, it's a huge help for parents. Get it over with early in the season.
So any other comments or announcements from visitors?
Just, I just, to, um, add to the water thing, um, they said just in general to, um, run your water till you feel it cold, that helps to clear out your pipes, especially in the morning. So they just said that that's a, a good practice for everybody to do, whether you're well or, but especially in the water district, because they said that it's a good idea when it's been sitting overnight, just to let the warm sitting water out and start drinking when it feels nice, cool to the touch, or that, when you're making your coffee in the morning, just run it cold and it's fresher.
Anyone else? All right, comments by board members, anyone? Let's, let's go around, we're all here, that's all.
I do have something to share, um, I, I do need to go and verify what information is on Marshwood's website, but, um, I did receive an email from Mary Nash, this was in June.
That's good, we're glad to hear that. While she was still.
Yeah, she was still. And, and the message, um, to summarize, was that they, the board had decided that we, we need all the late start, committee data and the realities of, you know, changing the school times, and they decided this time that they were gonna rename times and schedules were gonna be named. Uh, but there are posting, um, all the information on their website, it said, under the school board tab, the district's Facebook page, and each of the schools' website page. So I haven't gone and verified that that information is out there yet, but that.
I think I saw it on the Facebook page.
Did you?
Yeah. Yeah. At least that that was the conclusion, I think, is to, you know, maintain the status quo, yeah.
Yeah, since, since something's changing, we probably need to rush, rush into this, to announce it. That's good to know. Anything else? All right, I think, uh, all right, uh, that's it, do we have any more? In that case, uh, their a motion to adjourn will be entertained. I'll make the motion. And then a motion second. Emily, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.